Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the January 21st, 2020 on Mount Carmel Area School District Board Meeting. Can we please rise and say to apply to be allegiance?
The flag of the United States of America until the Republic stands one nation under God indivisible of liberty and justice for all.
Silence. Thank you. James Roll Call, please.
Mr. Brecker.
Here.
Mr. Brett. Is Mr. Brett on?
I am now.
Okay. Mr. Gonzalo.
Here.
Mrs. James is here. Mrs. Latour.
Here.
Mr. Mazatesta.
Here.
Mr. Muldowney.
Here.
Mr. Zach.
Mr. Zach.
Here.
Here.
And Mr. Zanella.
And I believe before we move into announcements, Mr. Cheddar, I would like to opportunity to have a PowerPoint.
Thank you, Mr. Brecker. I would like to take this opportunity to thank our entire learning community for their continued practice related to the COVID mitigation efforts. As we have mentioned before, our main goal is to continue with in-person instruction. There is no doubt that the best education possible for our students is to be physically in the classroom with their Mount Carmel area teachers. But to continue in-person instruction is very important that our entire learning community continue those COVID mitigation strategies. Is also very important to continue daily morning screenings and continue to keep their children, your children at home if sick or if they are exhibiting any COVID symptoms. And again, our families have been doing a great job of doing this. Another reminder to our learning community to continue to check our COVID-19 real-time tracker that is found on our main website. This will be the most up-to-date information on positive case counts in our district. I am going to try something new the last few weeks and send out week weekly updates to our learning community every Wednesday. As we've learned previously, our cases could spike at any moment and our families must be prepared to return to virtual instruction for a certain amount of days as per PD and Department of Health guidelines. Reminder to our, our students and our parents and our guardians that we are now holding nightly virtual tutoring with Mount Carmel area teachers. Weekly nights, Monday through Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. We are offering these tutoring sessions in primary grades, K-2, 3, intermediate, 4 to 6, math, ELA, science and social studies, and also special education. More information about the program is found on our main website. Interested students and families should reach out to their building's main office. I would also like to thank Bucknell University, who has partnered with our Mount Carmel area teachers. And we are lucky to have a handful of Bucknell education students available for support as well. I would like to take this opportunity to publicly thank the Parker family in Mount Carmel for their generous donation of $20,000 to help meet the clothing needs of needy children in our district. Our educational foundation reached recently created a clothing project and information is found on the main education foundation website, which is seen here on the screen. Please check out the site for more information on other educational foundation prod projects that benefit the students in our district. Again, thank you, Jason Corrin and the entire Parker family. That was such a generous donation is going to go a long way for our students and families. So again, thank you. And finally, thank you to the Mount Carmel area school board. It is a board recognition month. Thank you for all of your time, your effort to the children and families of the Mount Carmel area district. So to Mr. Gonzalo, Mr. Mazatesta, Mr. Brett, Mr. Brecker, Mrs. James, Mrs. Latour, Mr. Muldowney, Mr. Zach, Mr. Zanella and Mr. Greckel, our solicitor. Thank you for all your, your time and effort for the students of, of Mount Carmel area. And that is all I have at this time, Mr. Brecker.
Thank you, Mr. Cheddar. And does anybody else have any other announcements? None being heard. We can move on to the recognition of student merit award winners. And for the high school, we have McKenna Langle. And for the elementary school, we have Caden Heller. And I believe Mr. Gonzalo is going to be presenting the award for McKenna.
Thank you, Bill. The school board, Merit Award winner for the month of November is McKenna Langle. McKenna is a senior at the high school here, and she was nominated for the merit award by English teacher Ms. Ashley Jarasevic. Ms. Jarasevic said, McKenna is a student who pushes herself to succeed. She challenged herself this year by taking AP literature and composition, even though she was not in honors English during her junior year. McKenna is excelling in AP and comes up with such insightful answers that I often find myself thinking of a text in an entirely different light. I know that although McKenna faces challenges many her age should not, she is always a positive role model for those around her. Her drive and willingness to take the road less traveled is inspiring. She is the type of student that is becoming harder to find in today's society. McKenna is also in the band and devotes many hours a week to the Big Red Marching Band. Finally, McKenna is a natural leader when it comes to the novel idea reading club here at Mount Carmel area. McKenna is also a vice president of the marching band, as well as a member of the jazz and symphonic bands on the alto saxophone. She is also the treasure of the reading club and participates in both art club and diversity and the tolerance club. McKenna is an honor roll student and a member of the National Honor Society. Her future plans are to attend either Temple University or Drexel University to major in biology and eventually get her medical degree to become a forensic pathologist. She is the daughter of Duane Langle and Christie Artman of Marion Heights. And I so wanted to present this tonight, Mr. Brecker, as I feel a kinship with McKenna, as I too was a band member at Mount Carmel area high school. I chose to go to Temple University and pursue a career in the sciences. So McKenna, from all of us here at Mount Carmel area, good luck with your future.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalo. And for the elementary award, again, it's Caden Heller. And Caden is a first grade student at the Mount Carmel Elementary School. He was nominated for the merit award by Mrs. Lori Heath, first grade teacher. Mrs. Heath shared that Caden is a virtual learner this school year and a true example of what can be accomplished with online learning. Caden adapted quickly to his virtual classroom and continually shows enthusiasm for learning. His attendance is to be commended. Caden is, is present for all Google meets, completes all assignments in a timely fashion and engages by answering questions and assisting the teachers. Caden is also very polite and responsible with online etiquette. Each meet, he is pleasant and friendly, offering a good morning or how are you today to every teacher. Caden is an excellent student and great role model for his peers. He exemplifies tornado pride and it is a pleasure to recognize his efforts. First grade looks forward to the day Caden is back in school with us. Outside of school, Caden enjoys swimming, riding his bike and playing with family and friends. Caden is the son of Ryan and Debbie Heller and resides in Mount Carmel with his parents and brother Donovan. So on behalf of the Mount Carmel area Board of Education, congratulations to Caden. And next on our agenda is the, the approval of minutes. A motion is needed to approve the minutes of the December 2nd, 2020 special board meeting. December 2nd, 2020 reorganization meeting and the December 17th, 2020 special board meeting.
Motion Muldowney.
Sex, you can follow. Thank you. And this is a voice vote.
On favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Is there any PTA representative report tonight? None being heard. Any recognition of guests designed to speak to the listed agenda items? If so, please state your name and address.
There are no questions or comments at this time.
Thank you, Gary. Moving on to administrative reports, Mr. Cheddar.
I have no other reports at this time, Mr. Brecker.
Thank you. Principal reports, senior high school, Mrs. Verano.
Um, yes. Good evening, everyone. I just have a few items. I'd like to just expand very quickly on what Mr. Cheddar mentioned about the tutoring that is being offered. The specifics of the tutoring are located on our main website. As Mr. Cheddar said, I just want to remind our parents and our families that we have social studies, ELA, science, math and special education. And there is a teacher's email address that is listed that they are going to, that they may email to, to set that up. They can also call, call our guidance office or our principal's office. But I do want to remind our families that those teachers are teaching all grade levels. They're, they're remediating and tutoring in that subject for all grade levels. So it is not, they do not have to be your teacher for you to set up the tutoring. The other thing I want to just inform the school board that due to the COVID-19 pandemic, Act 136 provided every student that was enrolled in a Keystone course and passed the course in the 2019, 2020 school year, an automatic proficient status for that related exam. So we have been going through students that were enrolled in that course last year, and those students will be awarded an automatic proficient. That is going to enable us to again, allow our students to leave school a little bit early if they pass all three Keystone letters or all three Keystone classes. I'm sorry. So the letters for permission should be going out later this week or Monday morning, and we will be starting that next week. The only other thing I want to say is we were, we were thrilled to have the students back in our buildings and we hope that we can continue that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Verano. Mr. Dara on behalf of the junior high school.
Good evening, everybody. Our transition back to in-person learning went very smoothly earlier this month. The second marking period ended on Wednesday, January 20th. Grades for our teachers are due on Monday, the 25th, and report cards will be distributed next Friday on January 29th. I would just like to take this opportunity to thank Dave McPhee and our TV studio students for all their hard work throughout the year. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Dara. Elementary, Ms. Nestico.
Mr. Brecker, it's Mrs. Stepanski.
Thank you.
I just wanted to piggyback off of what Mr. Cheddar and Mrs. Verano said about virtual tutoring that started the week of January 4th. We have four teachers. If parents are interested, they can contact the elementary school office and we can get them scheduled for evening tutoring. Picture retakes at the elementary school are going to be Thursday, January 28th. And the times for virtual students are 11 to 12 o'clock. Just a new program that we're looking to start at the elementary school that we actually had several years ago is the FAST program. It's called Families and Schools Together, and we're forming a team at the elementary school. And it's a parent engagement program to build stronger, more supportive relationships at home to help the students be more successful at school. So we're looking forward to engaging our parents with their, with their kids at home. Like Mr. Dara said, the second marking period just ended yesterday. And on Friday, January 29th, the report card grades will be posted on the student information system. Just a reminder to parents that in order to view the report card grades, you must register for the CSIU parent portal on the elementary school's website. And we just wanted to also give a thank you to the various community organizations, families and churches from our district who contributed an impressive amount of gifts for students in need within our school throughout the holiday season. That's all, Mr. Brecker.
Thank you, Ms. Stepanski. And special education, Mrs. Edmondson.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. I just have a few things here. I was happy to welcome back our students earlier this month after the holidays. Like everyone said, we, we really enjoy having them in person and we feel it's best. Also to piggyback off of the tutoring hours, there is a special education teacher available in addition to the content teachers. And also a reminder to our students and parents that at the high school, our teachers do have office hours from 2:05 to 2:30. So if they do need additional help in the daytime, that is a time they can contact their teacher. If there's other times that the teacher may be available for either the elementary or the high school, the students or, and/or the parents can email their case manager for that. Or if they don't know the email address, they want to put in a message, they can call the special education office for that as well. And also I just wanted to mention that our teachers are working hard through some trainings this, this month. We have teachers preparing for the administration of their alternative assessments. And there was a new vendor this year, so they have to go through specific training for that. And also that we're continuing with our co-teacher training. It was interrupted last year due to COVID, so we're continuing on with that as well. And that's all I have, Mr. Brecker.
Thank you. Maintenance report, Mr. Fagley.
Yes. Good evening. Our custodial staff continues to do a wonderful job upkeeping and cleaning the schools. And hats off to them and as well as disinfecting. They're focusing on the high-touch tasks, so that seems to be going well. We just received a few more of the electrostatic sprayers and we immediately put them into use. And just a reminder, those are the devices that allow us to basically walk around a room and spray a mist of disinfectant, which attracts to everything that's in the room, top to bottom. So 99% of the room and its contents are disinfected within 10, 10 minutes. So these are great tools to have. And then we recently had our kickoff meeting for the feasibility study, which is being done by the McClure company. This is a district-wide comprehensive study to plan ahead for any future needs and renovations. We should have a report by them and hopefully have them attend next month's board meeting. And finally, we have an opening for a, a full-time custodian. If you're interested or know of anyone who may be, please have them contact the school district's administrative office. And that's all I have. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Fagley. Athletic directors report, Mr. Sikavich.
Yes. Good evening, all. Just want to bring an update on everything going on in athletics. As we are, should be aware, December 12th of last year, the governor put a pause to athletics as well as a number of other things. But we went on a three-week hiatus on sports. Our sports teams were not allowed to practice or compete. That put them in a real disadvantage and I want to compliment our coaches and our athletes that worked hard during that time on, by themselves, doing other things and not being able to practice. And we came back and we're back in the competition now and we're back into competing. And the work that they did December by themselves helped to get us back into operation again. And right now, we're again, under the current COVID protocols that are in our, our own school district return to play plan. And, or it's based on the Department of Health and the CDC guidelines. Of course, that's, you know, mask wearing, social distancing. And one thing is spectator limitations. And I do want to speak a little bit about that right now because there's a lot of questions going back and forth on that. We are allowed to have 10% occupancy in our athletic facilities, in our gymnasiums, in our areas where we're conducting sports and practices. So that's 10% of our total number that we're allowed in there. So we're, we're very limited on that. We're very limited on the number of fans we can let in. And please believe me, I could wish I could let everybody in. It's difficult. We are limit, we're trying to let as many parents and family members in as we can, as, as well as trying to let some of the opposing fans in as well. And I want to just say to everybody, I and we, and meaning Mount Carmel area, has no control on the opposing school districts and how they handle their spectator limitation. And they have to deal with the same numbers as we do. Some gyms are smaller than what we have. And there are schools that are, which I am not in complete agreement with, to be honest with you and be on for the record, that are now not allowing visiting parents into the gymnasium. You know, that has happened to us several times, or just the other night, you know, we had a basketball game and we weren't allowed to bring any parents in here into that facility. And it's, it's, not only it's not a, a good thing for parents not to be able to see their kid, but it's a safety factor. And that's one thing that we here at Mount Carmel, I try to make it that at least one parent from the visiting team is here in case there is an emergency or a situation that you need a parent. And I will bring up that just last Saturday, we had an incident at our basketball game where one of the opposing players got in a situation where we had a call for an ambulance. And I, I, I'm fearful to think about what would have happened if I didn't have a parent here that I, that wasn't here that I would have had to deal with. Mr. Schwally would not have been able to deal with. So it's very important that. So I want to rest and assure everybody that we have at least one parent from the opposing team that's present in our gymnasium. And of course, we get as many people as we can, but we're trying to practice all guidelines as best we can. But I want to compliment, you know, Mr. McPhee has purchased a wonderful camera unit through the audiovisual department that we're using through our, our YouTube channel that is showing all the, all our events, junior high, senior high through our YouTube that you can see. Really great quality. So anybody can turn in and see any of our events. There's a game going on right now with Shamok and junior high basketball. You can turn on YouTube and see that right now. And when we cannot do that, when we're on the road, you know, Cassandra Niglio was able to hook us up a Facebook page a short time ago for Mount Carmel area athletics, which we're posting a lot of information on. But at the same time, Facebook allows you to do a Facebook Live broadcast. So we're able to have someone go to away events in a lot of situations and do a Facebook Live of, of the event, which we did at the gym that we were at the other night, that our fans weren't able to go to. At least we're getting them to see it on Facebook. So they're, they're able to see it. So we're doing as much as we can for our fans to see what's going on with our athletics. I just want to mention also that this last Wednesday at Central Columbia, Michael Belicic became the 15th player in Mount Carmel area history to join the thousand-point fraternity. He scored his thousand point in his career and I, I want to publicly mention that and compliment Mike on that feat. He's a, he's a great athlete. He's a three-sport kid. He was on our football team and he's also one heck of a baseball player too. But it's forte definitely in basketball. He has a, a nice little loop shot that I enjoy always watching. So a compliment to Mike Belicic. Also want to mention that as came out several months ago that Burt Street, Mount Carmel, by, with the help of Mount Carmel Township changed Burt Street. That was aligned with the Silver Bowl to Burt Street became Brett Beach Way. If you go down there, you'll, you'll notice that the signs there, we had a lot of press on that and that was a great thing. But over the last few months, I was thinking one thing with the new postal regulation. Every facility has a actual postal address. Doesn't matter where you go, you have a postal address. The Silver Bowl has a postal address. Everybody has a postal address. So the Silver Bowl was actually 2649 Locust Gap Highway. That was the address of the Silver Bowl. And I would give that out to people for, you know, coming from away if they wanted to put that into their GPS. That would get you to the Silver Bowl. I thought to myself, well, if we have Brett Beach Way, why can't we get another address, change of address for our Silver Bowl? So in cooperation with Northumberland County, with Mount Carmel Township Supervisor and with Kurt Everett up at the Mount Carmel Post Office, the postmaster, we were able to coordinate all three and they all were in complete agreement. And as of today, and it was changed a month or so ago, but as of today, I want to publicly announce that the Silver Bowl address now is 22 Brett Beach Way, Mount Carmel, Pennsylvania. Which, as we all know, that was Brett's number. So I think that's a great thing and it's a great compliment to Brett and especially a Kansas City plan right now. So I compliment that. So that's a great thing. I wanted everybody to know. Last thing I just wanted to say that I, I just wanted to join Mr. Cheddar saying, compliment our school board. I, I've been dealing with school boards here at Mount Carmel area for 25 years now. And I just want to say this board is as dedicated as all, any of them that I saw in my tenure. You've always had a positive interaction with our administration and that's very noteworthy and greatly appreciated. Thank you for your work. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Sikavich. And moving on to athletic items, a motion is needed to approve athletic items one and two as listed.
Motion. Second, Muldowney.
Thank you. Mrs. James, roll call.
Mr. Brecker.
Yes.
Mr. Brett. Mr. Brett. Mr. Gonzalo.
I'm sorry. Yes.
Mrs. James Felches. Mrs. Latour.
Yes.
Mr. Mazatesta.
I'd like to take just one second to second what Greg had said about WKMC himself and everybody else and parents and other folks doing the Facebook Live. Thank you for that. It is going to allow everybody, as we are still under COVID protocols, to both watch and support Mount Carmel area athletics. A lot of compliments coming in from inside the school district and also from around the country. And yes, I'm the.
I would agree with Tony.
Thank you. Mr. Muldowney.
Yes, and I would agree with Tony as well. I think it's a big asset for what is happening right now. And I think it's a big plus for our community.
Thank you. Mr. Zach.
Yes.
Mr. Zanella.
Yes.
Did Mr. Brett come back on? Okay.
Moving on to financial, a motion is needed to approve financial items one through four.
Motion, Mr. Zach. Second, Muldowney.
Thank you. Roll call, Mrs. James.
Mr. Gonzalo.
Yes.
Mrs. James Felches. Mrs. Latour.
Yes.
Mr. Mazatesta.
Yes.
Mr. Muldowney.
Yes.
Mr. Zach.
Yes.
Mr. Zanella.
Yes.
Mr. Brecker.
Yes.
And Mr. Brett.
I'm reading a text from Mr. Brett right now stating he's having phone and computer issues.
Okay. Okay.
Moving on to committee reports, any update on the Mount Carmel area education foundation?
Mr. Brecker, tonight the foundation will be meeting at the conclusion of our board meeting. And just a reminder to our community to continue to check out the main website, the foundation website for all the Mount Carmel area fundraisers at this time. That is all I have.
Mr. Brecker, I have something as well, Mr. President.
Sure.
On, as Chair of the recently started the special education committee, I have reached out to Mrs. Edmondson and her staff. We have six volunteers from her staff as well as the board members. And I, I encouraged her to ask her staff to develop some kind of a wish list and some specific goals so that we have our first meeting, we can sit down and put our feet on the ground and start running to encourage and develop something with this committee.
Thank you, Mr. Muldowney. And thank you, Mrs. Edmondson, for your diligent cooperation in getting some, some of your folks together so we can join this committee. Moving on to new business, a motion is needed to approve new business items one through nine as listed. And I will read numbers one and seven completely. Number one, approve the annual donation to the Mount Carmel area public library in the amount of $4,000. Number seven, approve the 2021, 2022 proposed preliminary general fund budget in the amount of $21,642,743 and 5 cents and make it available for public inspection.
Motion Latour.
Second, Muldowney.
Thank you.
Roll call, Mrs. James.
Uh, Mr. Brecker.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Brett?
Yes.
Okay.
No. Did you hear me?
Yes.
You're in.
All right, yes, I vote yes.
Mr. Gonzalo?
Yes.
Mrs. James votes yes. Mrs. Latour?
Yes.
Mr. Mazatesta?
Yes.
Mr. Muldowney?
Yes.
Mr. Zach?
Yes.
And Mr. Zanella?
Yes.
Motion passes 9-0.
Moving on to personnel items, a motion is needed to approve personnel items one through four as listed. Motion, Jose.
Second, Mr. Zach.
Roll call, please.
Okay. Mrs. Latour?
Yes.
Mr. Mazatesta?
Yes.
Mr. Muldowney? Mr. Muldowney? Bob? I know you're there. Mr. Zach?
Yes.
Mr. Zanella?
Yes.
Mr. Brecker?
Yes.
Mr. Brett?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalo?
Yes.
Mrs. James Felchess. Mr. Muldowney, are you, can you hear now?
Yes, I'm back online. I vote yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes 9-0.
At this point, are there any public comments and questions?
There are none at this time.
Thank you, Gary. And I'd like to entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion, Latour.
Second, Jose. Voice vote.
All favor.
Aye. Aye.
And just to note, the next regular board meeting is February 17th, 2021. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.
Good night, everyone.
All right, good night. Thank you.